All right, let's bring this meeting to order. This is a joint general government subcommittee town council meeting Wednesday, November 19th, 2025, 6:00 PM in the Laurent E. McDonald Veterans Meeting Room. Agenda item number two, roll call. Councilor Daniel?
Present.
Councilor Dow is not here. And citizen member Columbus?
Present.
So, and I'm present as the chairman, so that's, we have a court room. Okay. Agenda item number three. Review and discuss demolition delay by law approved by the historical commission. Entertain a motion to recommend the town council for acceptance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, does anybody do you?
Columbus?
So this is something that we discussed like years ago, I believe?
Yes.
Quite some time ago.
It's changed over that since then.
Yeah, I've seen some changing, right? So for those listening to this, it's a demolition delay by law in regard to historic buildings, architectural, historic, cultural type properties. And we had some concerns that we last time in terms of telling people what to do with their property and how long and those types of things. So I went through this again. It's, it's well written. I have a couple of concerns still. When I look at, and is this up posted yet online? Well, was this, no, this was materials not posted under the agenda though, but only we received this, correct? So the public hasn't seen it, okay. So when you look at say three, five, six, seven, those are the, what happens when? How many days, seven business days that somebody wants?
To answer that question, I would refer to Ted Tetro.
Right, right. Well, no, it's not a question, it's just a timing.
He worked with us on this.
Okay.
That's, this final draft? He has worked with us quite a bit on...
How would she go?
Yes.
Right, I understand that. What I'm saying is in regard to what you decided was, I'm just looking at the time. So for, for people who are listening, the first part, you know, if, if somebody applies for demolition permit, they're then, if it turns out it's in the central core or historic significance, or if it's deemed one of those things, then there's a seven days from the, from the building inspector, then there's 15 days from the commission to determine whether or not it's significant to not be torn down. So that's 22 days potentially. And then from there, when there's a determination coming, there's a public hearing, they've got up to 30 days to do the public hearing and make it determine, another 30 days from the public hearing to make a determination as to whether or not they can postpone someone's demolition. So I'm just adding up the days. So I was doing that again, because my only, my only stickler is how long the process of waiting takes. And then if you determine that the building is significant and it shouldn't be potentially torn down, you have an 18 month moratorium, basically. The commission is able to apply an 18 months to the owner that they can't tear it down. So that comes up to about 21 months. So my only concern is the 18 months being maybe 12 months instead of 18 months or something, because then you add the three, now you have to a year and a half anyway. So this doesn't necessarily, this by law won't necessarily fully stop a building from being demolished, because in the end, potentially it could still be demolished. It's a delay to try and get somebody else to renovate it or to do other some purpose. I, I get that, and that's good. I mean, that's a, so it doesn't really take away somebody's complete right to what they want to do, it just delays it perhaps and gives an opportunity for something else to happen. So I get all that. My only concern, like I said, it seemed like it was still a bit of a long stretch. And the only concern, the only, was two things. One would be, in this case, so sometimes, you know, people come in, they buy something and then they think they're going to do something. Will they be told, or is there, I don't know how we publish that, I guess they have to look, hopefully they do their due diligence and understand that we have one of these types of bylaws that exist? Do you know what I mean? Like an investor comes in, he buys a property, turn, and then, you know, thinks he can just come demolish and build something else perhaps. But, but if they don't know we have this by law, they might buy something and then be delayed, you know, 24, 21 months or... So I'm just kind of thinking about in those terms of progress, not that I, I like historic buildings and we've had some beautiful ones preserved. So, those are the things, those are just thoughts, not that it's going to make a difference probably tonight. And the only other problem I have is number three, under enforcement and remedies. If the building is subject to this by law is demolished without first obtaining a demolition permit, no building permit shall be issued for a period of a year and a half from the date of the demolition on the subject parcel of the land, or any parcels of land under common ownership and control. So I guess I wanted to look at that a little deeper, and then it ends with, well, unless outstanding taxes, fines are paid to town and building permit is faithful, is for the faithful restoration referred to above, or unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. The unless otherwise agreed to by the commission is subjective. So that was the only other thing that I was concerned about, that language, you know, because then the commission could be controversial in some way, or have their own, like nefarious reasons for turning somebody down.
By your questions?
Go to Ted.
Because this, this particular, the last one, the last one...
I'll go have a seat at the head of the table.
The last one is the one Ted actually, we did the wording with him, and the other questions you had was...
Yeah, the, the timeline, if anybody does, if anybody does come in and say, okay, say let's, let's use 316 Main, okay? When they come in and they go to buy that, we discuss it straight with them, what the expectations are, where it's going to go, and how it's going to go. Now, when they come in and buy it, we're going to do this simultaneously with what they're going to do. If they're going to bring in engineered plans and stuff and how to correct it, we're also doing this simultaneously. So it's really not going to delay them. We're moving the project forward either way, but we want to follow the historic guidelines that we can follow. So facades, stuff like that. Because I've had a lot of people come in and say, just on our building, they're interested in it, they want to make, they want to make apartments, move a building. Fantastic, great. You cannot remove the storefronts.
Really?
Central core, cannot take the storefronts off. So we're not putting apartments on the ground for, of any Main Street property. It's not going to happen. And that's literally what turns a lot of them away, because they want to put apartments right on Main Street, right on the first floor.
Right, right.
No, no, we're not doing that. That would destroy Main Street.
Interesting, I wasn't aware of that. Is that somewhere?
It's on our bylaws.
It's in the bylaws that...
Central core.
Central core has to have...
You have to maintain the storefronts. You can reduce them, you can reduce them.
Right, reduce them so you can put apartment towards the backside, say, and have something pop up in the front.
You need to maintain the storefront.
That'd be an interesting thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could see displays or leave space in the front just for...
Little lobby.
Yeah.
Well, you don't have to have, yeah, well, you don't have to have a 2,000 square foot store.
Right.
You know, you could have a...
Oh, no, no, I'm envisioning like some stuff, okay. All right, so that's interesting to know.
Which would make it...
It's probably good information for...
Which would make it easier for rent, because a lot of these small shops, they're not looking for huge areas.
Right.
They're looking for the smaller areas, and it would lower the rent, so people could actually afford to do what they need to do.
Right, and then use the backspace for whatever.
Right.
Interesting.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of different avenues, but we're going to approach them both at the same time. That's why we put the, they were a lot greater than that. We reduced them to a point where it's kind of feasible, so by the time they get their engineering and everything done, it's the same time limit as that.
But that's if somebody comes in and talks to you, there are people that just buy things and then find out after.
They do, and they find out after, as well, as soon as they buy it, they come in and they say, this is what I want to do. Well, okay, you've got to get engineering plans, you've got to do this, you've got to do this, you've got to do this, and you have to go by this.
Right.
So they're still going to get done at the same time.
Okay, all right. I mean, I'm just, again, I was, I was looking at the 18 months and I still thought it seemed long.
No, I do understand that. And then there's the emergency situations where if something does have to be taken down because of structural integrity or whatever, that goes automatic.
Right, okay. No, I have no problem. And I know you've worked a lot on this, so if you want to give me a hard time, you know, it's, this isn't about, it's really about due diligence and making sure that it makes sense. And then, so if you go to number three, when you're, so you got the demolition on a property, are you saying it's an adjacent property that's attached to it, a parcel that's, it says common ownership? So are you saying if I own two pieces of property somewhere in town and I demolish one without permit, permission, I don't get to build or do something on my other?
No, see, this is a penalty. So if somebody comes in and they have a historic, they'll say it's historic, and they just go in and without pulling a permit or anything and just tear it down.
Right.
Well, for one, yeah, you're going to get penalized either way, because you, there are steps you have to take to take a building down.
Absolutely.
Asbestos reports, I have to have all the shut offs, gas, water, sewer, electrical. So if you just tore it down without even pulling a permit, well, you're in trouble.
Right.
So to hold them up for that pile of, that amount of time, I have no issue with that, because, you know what, you shouldn't have done it in the first place.
Right, okay.
That's why, you know, I have no issue with that.
I think we had it as three years.
We had it at three, right. So we brought it down to a year and a half.
I'm curious, I know that, because I remember this being an issue in March, that somebody tells, I heard that somebody had done some, something and then it got held up for...
I've had people do it.
Yeah.
And, because Webster has a similar bylaw, and they've done it in, in Webster, where they tore the building down, they're like, oh, and I'm like, you didn't even get a permit, you didn't even talk to anybody, just went in with wrecking ball, tore the thing down. What about permits? Where's all the asbestos reports? Where's this, where's that, where's this? Oh, I don't know. You know what? You're going to sit back now until we get all this organized and straightened out, and sometimes it takes a while.
Pay all the fees that you should have had to pay.
Right, and sometimes it takes a while.
Yeah.
So a year and a half, I don't think is unreasonable.
All right, so, and that last line, though, the only thing that bothers me with that is depending on who's sitting on the commission at the time, you know, their friend Joe tore down a house, and so his friend Karen on the commission, his other friend Bob, and they're going to like, oh, unless otherwise agreed by the commission, let them slide.
That's against ethics though.
Yeah, yeah.
I know it's ethics, but you...
That would be a major ethics violation.
It's a major ethics violation, major.
It happens all the time here, hate to say it, I'm just going to say it, happens all the time in this town.
Well, and if you look at all of...
On various things, not necessarily...
No, I, I understand that.
I understand it too, Sturbridge's bylaws that way conquered Lexington.
But I also...
That's the, okay.
We looked at several.
I also understand that, you know, we have our due diligence to do, so it will be watched either way.
Yeah.
And it will be taken care of by, it's not one department that's trying to do this, this is going to have to be a joint thing with everybody.
Well, I would hope then that the departments would call up the commission, should the commission decide to vote a way that isn't...
Isn't feasible.
That seem ethical.
Right, right.
Okay, I'm just putting it out there.
Yep, no, I agree, I understand that.
All right.
All right.
Good, I'm good, thank you.
Anybody?
Yeah, I also have a concern about a year and a half. Why a year and a half and not a year? What's the logic behind that?
Well, there's going to have to be a lot of research done, for one. We have DEP, EPA, you know, when you start tearing things down without any permits and you mess with asbestos, lead, all that stuff goes into certain departments. It could hang, the E, the DEP or the EPA could hang it, hold it up for a year. Easy. We have, we have a project right now, right now, that it was bought off the town, I won't say the address, but it was bought off the town. The gentleman hired a contractor, he said he was a contractor, because I said, I need his license information. He took all the asbestos off the building, crushed it up in the land, piled it right on side of conservation, right on the side of the pond, which leads into a pond, which is a waterway that goes to Connecticut. So we have asbestos leaching, it was in the rivers, and this guy did it all without permits, all without permits. But the contractor was licensed, so I said, well, I need his license number. We are still, this has been going on, well, the property was bought, not this last auction, the auction before, so what are we talking, six, seven months ago? And I'm still working with EPA and DEP to clean up the site, it hasn't been touched yet, and I'm almost at a year already, just to clean the site. Because he did not pull a permit, he went through, and the guy wasn't even licensed, he had a driver's license. That's what the guy mailed me, he mailed me a driver's license. He goes, this is his license. I said, that's not what I want, where's his contractor's license? Oh, this is what he's got. I said, well, that doesn't work. So I have a house that's half demolished, I got piles of dirt that's full of asbestos, sitting on a wall, right on the edge, which is a big problem conservation, and conservation is well aware of it. And we are fighting with the EPA and the DEP on how he's going to clean it up, we haven't got, haven't got anything yet. And we're almost talking a year already.
Were you, excuse me, were you referring to the year and a half of the last, or the year and a half that they make you wait till you demolish them all?
Both.
To either?
Yeah.
So how do you, so the first part, you're saying a year and a half you don't think, because it's coinciding with somebody buying something, you don't think a year and a half is too long to have to wait to get them to sell it or find somebody or do something? The first year and a half, as you're saying?
Right, I think we're talking about at the beginning, where we talk about...
If you believe it's historic.
What section are you looking at?
It's page three, number nine, that goes into the second page on four.
Yeah, it's also, it's also under the definition of rule 11. So as I, as I read...
No demolition permit issued up to, until 18 months after the date of the determination?
If it's considered, if it's considered a preferable preserved building, that can't issue a demolition permit until 18 months after, the delay is 18 months essentially. So why is, so I think the question is, why is the delay 18 months?
Why is that delay on, only because there are avenues that the town does provide, there are avenues the town provides with like PEG, who can, if it's a historic building and if it does have significant value to the town, we can put in applications for grant money to associate with that building that maybe these people haven't talked about. So that does take time, if you put the application in, you're not going to get the money in three weeks. So that's an avenue, we just want to make sure everybody exhausts their avenues, that's all.
Okay, so if I own, if I own a building that is slowly deteriorating, and it's gotten to the point that, from what I've seen from, from people that have come in and maybe shown an interest in the building, and they're all saying, no, 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 and the building's been on the market for two or three years already, you're saying that in order for me to make the lot useful, I have to wait another 18 months after that, while the building is sitting there, and I need to secure that building and keep, you know, keep people out of it, and, you know, rent liars and the whole thing.
Would that fall under that?
That would fall under, yeah, that would fall under demolition by neglect. That would fall under 12, 12 dash 106, page five.
But if somebody doesn't have the money, then you, I mean, if, so if the owner owns it, and they, they don't have the money, they want to sell it, or they want...
I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie to anybody here, and I'm not trying to do that. A demolition by law, a demolition delay by law, no matter what, kind of, I'm not going to say violates, but it does, it does put a strain on property owners. It will. But if you have significant property in town that you want to protect, you have to have the delays, the delay system, so you can at least run the avenues that you need to run to make sure that they exhaust them all. If they don't, and you just say, ah, just tear it down. If it's structurally unsound, yes, it's going to be an emergency demolition, it'll go down.
And that goes under...
Then that goes under me, that's, that's, that's state building code regardless. So if there's something wrong, like say you have a building, like you were saying, you own a building that's deteriorating and you see it's going bad, and it's been on the market for two years, well, if it's a public safety issue, it's going to go down, no matter what, it's not going to wait the 18 months, you can tear it down. And then we're going to go as a, a functional unit, you know, your, your lot is now a buildable lot, just without the structure. This is just, and this is also controlled by, like I said, it's not one entity, it's going to be controlled by them, the building department, border health, I mean, there's a lot of people that are going to be involved in this that have a say. This is just a tool that can be used to make sure that we don't lose something that's valuable to the town.
I would hate to see something like 111 Main Street, which is the Ruth Wells Art Center and Manom Castle, it's 200 years old this year. I would hate to see something happen to it.
We just had a contractor buy seven, what is it, 757 Main? 757 Main Street. It was one of the two that were vacant up on the top, down by Mill Street. He's doing a fantastic job.
Yes, yeah, the corner of High and Main Street.
The people go quickly, it's on the market, I'm like, how did that?
You've got to see how beautiful it is in Southern.
I was told it was full of human, I was told that that...
No, that's the other one.
That's the one, it's Dale Street.
Oh!
That's 743, 743 is, yes.
Oh, because like, we, we always be brought by...
That one though, I mean, the guy did a fantastic job, I totally had to maintain the outside, the exterior, and he did, he tried to do exactly what was there. And I mean, it came out beautiful, it's going to be back on, back on...
Yeah, there's a facade on it.
Yeah, because that's a gorgeous building, but, you know.
Councilor Daniels, good, all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, I have some questions, but I'm going to go to the floor first. Councilor Chenier?
Couple of questions, and I'm not sure if Chair remembers, or John remembers, or somebody in the audience, can this by law come before council a while back?
It's come several times, and we've already, we tweaked it, we have...
Was voted down by council?
And we went back and did corrections with Ted Tetro for that by law.
Have elected council. No, I think it's only come here.
It's only, it's only come here.
No, supplement, no, just supplement.
It was tabled, okay?
That was postponed.
The couple of issues I have, there's a big part of that discussion that ended around taking with too much government knowledge into people's lives, and we were concerned about the core area. Core area is already protected by demolitions and those kind of things. What concerns me as a, as a resident of the community is you're taking something away from me, and Teddy said it himself, that you're going to put a hot chip on the avid jaw out there of delaying things. And if every building needs to go for a review...
No, it's not what it says. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
All right, let me finish. So if every building was to go under the review, the determination, Teddy has the process, the law has a process now that does that kind of thing. But most important to me right at the moment is the fact that we're going to be possibly voting on a by law, and we have a by law review committee starting. I think that by law should go to the by law review committee and not make a by law while this process is going on, so I'm not going to support it as a counselor when it's brought to the table. I just think we've put too much government now into people and telling people what to do with their stuff, with their properties. If we have a, a property that is beyond, not beyond repair, but beyond the needs of somebody that owns that property, and they want to take it down, I think we should allow it. And we, we got the core area covered, we got Teddy to be able to determine the process that it takes, the, the asbestos, the all the hazardous material incidents, but if that person wants to take that property down, that should be their choice. It's not up to government to dictate what we do with people's property, we can make them clean it up, but anything more than that, I think that we shouldn't do that. I think we are infringing on people's rights, and this has been going on way too long, and I think it needs to stop.
Through, through the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
We did address a lot of that, because before the demolition delay by law covered a large area, we restricted that now, it's not that large area anymore, it's concentrated areas where there are key, key structures that need to be watched.
What's the concentrated areas?
Well, we have central core, we have the, the house up on...
Colav?
Colav, that is significant because of the architect that designed it. You know, we have, we have certain buildings that are, so we, we didn't go townwide, it's, you know, because I agree with you, a ranch is not something historic, and I, I explained that to them. I lived in a ranch that was built 50 years ago, you know? There's nothing historic about clamshell molding, nothing. And if you want to call, yeah, and if you want to call it historic, well, you know what, I'm historic, so who's going to protect me?
I just, I just, again, in my main focus is I just think we're putting too much more on, on the people.
And I, and I agree with that.
And that's a difficult part for me to support, so...
I did agree with that, and I do agree with that, which is why we dumbed it down and we kind of brought it into a more realistic aspect. I just, you know, I just hope you read it and look at it as what it is now, not what it was before.
Well, again, the fact that we have a by law review committee that is going to be researching all our bylaws, I think sending that to them to make a determination would be much better for me to be able to support something than just coming Monday night and wrote it, but just my opinion.
I just, we've been writing it for over seven years.
I've been here three years and I've seen it come up once.
It's, it's come up more than once. I have all my notes, but it's, we've been writing, we were asked to write it almost seven years ago.
Yeah, it could be, but I just, you know, I've been on council for three years, and this is the second time that I've seen it, but I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Councilor Lawson?
Just a quick, a couple of things. I'm a guy that believes in the historical building is outreach. Teddy and I kind of banged heads on the mill. The mill where the, the seat of the, what do you call the tower in the building, and it was bulging, and there was a lot of different issues, we were the ones that turned around and said, let's get an engineer to tell us, is this, can we refurbish this building? We had actually investors that wanted to buy it, if an engineer would come forward and put the stamp on and say, this historical building is salvageable, well, it came back and it says, take it down. So in my mind, you know, that tower was beautiful, it was an insignia of the world forever, where the immigrants came into town, from Poland, from all over, working textiles, one of our biggest employees was Westwood Textiles. So knowing the historical value of it, you know, I was concerned, I was like, you know, let's try and do it, Teddy. Teddy and I walked and looked at the building, they cut the turnbuckle at some point, which bulged the wall, it's a battered building, I understood the construction of it, and sad to say that things got to come down, I thought people's engineer didn't save it? And we made every effort, it took us an over a year and a half to get that engineering study, to say, well, we have to take it over from the previous owners for taxes in order for us to get in the building and to get control of it, to see whether it's good or bad. So that being aside, I mean, we'll work on it, whether it goes to the by law committee or it goes to the council. All the recommendations from the by law committee have to come to the council anyways. So I know Kelly is the chairman of the by law committee, so far, we've talked about different things, we're going to be moving forward on it at the next meeting. Question to Ted, Ted, the building, the brick building that they rehabbed, I'm very familiar with the, I walked through the building before you were hired, which is the dentist office of Mr. LaBonne.
No, that's the next one.
The one up.
Yep, 743 is the...
Now it's supposed to be signed over to the town by the family. Does the town have possession of that yet?
No, we can't, right now it's in probate. It never, the problem with that structure, which I agree, that is a classic historic structure, it's beautiful.
Beautiful house.
The problem with that is it never completed probate when the previous owner passed. So the sister doesn't legally have ownership of the, of the property. She's supposedly in charge, she wants nothing to do with it, but legally, she can't sign any papers, turning it over, doing anything.
But from what I understood, was the town was going to make a move on it for the taxes to take it.
But we'd have to go through probate first.
So it's in probate?
We'd have to pay for probate, it's not in anything right now.
So what's the holdup?
The holdup is we would have to pay whatever it costs to get it through probate, to get her to own it, and then she could transfer it to the town.
Does the town man know about this?
Uh, no, I just found out about it, uh, last week.
Okay, we'll put that in full view.
Yep. That was a lot of digging.
Okay, anybody?
I just wanted to clarify, because a previous question was sort of said like, any building, and this is the historic building, because we don't want what happened to the Beechwood to happen to other ones. It, I mean, it, it could still happen, but at least there would be a process. So it's not just a random building, you know? I mean, I like my house, but, but, yeah, most people would be like, hmm, I don't care.
Thomas?
So to Councilor Chenier's questions or comments, so it has come to us, I'd say about three times or so, I've been on Gen Gov for ever, since I was off council pretty much, so I've, I've seen this come back and forth, and I've been asked what was going on with it at one time. And we had concerns because it seemed overreaching, much more overreaching than it is now. And to Maureen's point, I was going to bring that up, do we really want to see what happened to the Beechwood happen again? I feel that, that, I came into town and went, where'd the building go? I had been away for a week or something, and suddenly the building was gone, I didn't even know it was up for sale or up for, I didn't, nobody knew. At least if somebody had known, maybe somebody would have bought it or, or done something about it, you know, delayed it slightly in order to have a different outcome, because I don't understand, I was in that building only a few years before, it certainly didn't look like it needed demolition, it needed some care, but it didn't need demolition. So I was shocked to see that building. And now, what has it been, for how many years now, a vacant lot? You know, it's great.
Five?
It's been a lot, through COVID, through the whole.
About six years it came down.
You know, and it's so sad because we did so much, you know, the Wells Building was, was so well restored, and across the street is the vacant lot. You know, it was gonna be this, or it was gonna be that, or it was gonna be something, but it's not.
The property owner does wanna put.
Yep, apartments or something now.
Apartments in there that resemble the Wells Building.
Yeah, great, that'd be lovely, but in the meantime. At least there would have been notice to the public that there's an opportunity for something better than nothing. And it wasn't, just because there was nothing in place. And to your point of the, you know, the bylaw committee, that's great. They're looking at a lot of things, but you, these people, the commission, and they don't, I'm sorry. I, you know, having helped with bylaw committees and such. These are people that the commission itself, the various departments have all worked on this in their capacity of what their, their position is and what their forte is. The bylaw committee looks at all different things and asks a lot of questions, but these people have done the hard work to say that this is something that is potentially needed, you know, our department heads are thinking it is. So, I mean, yeah, you can slip it in there if you want to, but why delay it any further? I mean, they did the work. It's not up to the bylaw committee to create new bylaws. It's up to the bylaw committee to make sure that the bylaws are in sync with the charter. The charters and, well, the charter committees make sure everything's in sync with it. And whether or not the bylaws are still necessary based on time and, and how things are affected now. It's not, this already is being vetted by the people who, who work, who work for the positions that they're appointed to. So I, I find saying, oh, it just goes to the bylaw committee, um, yeah.
Just not a matter of just pushing it over to the bylaw committee. I think the bylaw committee could assist them in making the bylaw a little better. That's all.
I ask, I ask that the.
You're right.
Okay, that you wait to be recognized before you speak.
Sorry.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna reinforce my comment. They are the committee that is, have been in charge of this for many years now and have worked with all the departments strongly in the last year especially to get, to tweak it so that it's right. I, it's not the bylaw committee's job to make new bylaws. It's their job to see if the bylaws we already have work in, within this community. They're not to make new, that's not for them to make new bylaws.
Um, Council Lazlo.
A lot of work's been done on this one. Uh, no, I don't know, like, I probably disagree with Council Chenier. We, uh, if someone's knocking the tin on the issue, remember one thing, it's gotta go to council, whether it goes to your bylaw committee or it goes to your historical committee, or whether it goes to the conservation committee. All bylaws are fed, and then they'll bring it up to the council. So for myself, when citizens knock the tin on a bylaw, you're getting a different viewpoint. And they work through the inspections department, wherever the file is to be. So for myself, I'm having a tug of war on the, the bylaw itself, but I think that it needs to stand on its own merits. And I do think it should go to the council because all bylaws end up on the council floor. And because this committee did so much work on it, I think it's been, if anything, if the council doesn't like it, vote against it. If they're in favor of it, vote for it.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Um, I agree one hundred percent. When, when I was brought into this and started to talk about it, you can ask these ladies here, I was, I'm not gonna say.
One hundred percent against it.
I was gonna say a hundred percent. I was gonna say ninety-eight percent against it. But there is a need for it. There is a need for it, especially with what we have in this town, and I do get that. I did get that over the time. I just needed to make it more feasible so it doesn't affect more people than it needs to. That's all. But, and I think we did that. I think we brought it into a realistic area. Took a lot of work. These ladies did a hell of a job, and they had to put up with me, so that's kinda hard.
All right, I have, go ahead.
I just, I wanna, for the record, um, working with Ted on this the last couple, six months, seven months, really working on it hard. He showed up at our meetings, and we have worked through it and bouncing ideas back and forth. And to get it to this point, I thank you. We've worked hard on it for the last seven years, and Denise has said, we, we've come, this is the fourth time. And it was, it's, I have them all in my folder, just from the beginning to now. It is much smaller, much compact. It's more direct, so thank you.
You guys did a great job.
So I have, I have some questions. Um, under twelve one oh two, the definition. Uh, definition number eight, demolition. It defines it as any act of pulling down, destroying, removing, erasing a building or commencing the work of, of total or substantial exterior destruction with the intent of completing the same. So, um, just as a matter of intent, does this mean, are you, are we trying to restrict the, the demolition to simply the entire building? Or like, if I wanted to knock down, um, say, a, uh, a half of the building and put another, add another structure to it, would that be considered a demolition?
If you wanted to tear down half the structure, yeah, you're still doing demolition.
Still demolition. So the intent is that demolition would include partial.
Partial, total.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
That's just, that's.
Um, that is just a definition of what demolition actually is.
I did have, on number eleven, it talks about what a preferable, what a preferable preserved building is. Says any significant building which the commission determines is in a public interest to be preserved and rehabilitated rather than demolished. It goes into a preferably preserved building subject to an eighteen-month demolition delay period by this law. And I, I had the same question everybody else did about the eighteen months. Think that's been answered, so we don't, we need to go there, uh, right now. Um, um, I. Section twelve, um, under that same definition, section twelve, significant buildings. Um, items D and E particularly, the building is importantly associated with one or more, or more, one of more historic persons or events, or with broad architectural, cultural, political, economic, or social history of the town, Commonwealth or nation. And E says the building is historically or architecturally important. Um, those seem to be very subjective terms as to what is considered historic and what is considered architecturally important. So I'm just trying to figure out where, who's making those determinations.
That will be a combination of all departments plus historical commission, plus our historical records. Now, like, you, you, you have, I'm just gonna use for an example, sixty-one Chestnut Street. Albert Cheney Wells, that was his house. He was fifty-one, and I know the history of it. He was fifty-one percent shareholder in the AO. He was the largest holder in, in the AO. He served in the militia in the war. I mean, there's tons of history in the building. Would you want it torn down?
Not saying I would. I'm just saying that I wanna know who's making the decision as to, as to who.
That's why the eighteen months, that's why the eighteen months comes into play, because you wanna do your research on the building. I don't wanna, I don't wanna tear down one of the old Wells buildings, you know, like the, where Subway is. You know, you have the rotary floor that's still under the floor of Subway.
Right.
Because she couldn't back up her car.
But.
So it would rotate it for her.
Okay, true, true, right. The eighteen months does not, the eighteen months does not kick in, however, until the building has been, is, is, is a, is determined, been determined to be a significant building and is considered a preferred, preferred, preserved.
Let's say, let's say.
Okay, so I guess, I'm just, I'm just trying to get into a little of the language here, uh, to make sure that we've got this right.
I know, yep.
Um, I just wanna know, really, in this particular case, I, all I really wanna know is who's making the determination that the, that the building is historic or associated with important, or is architecturally important? Um, who's making those determinations?
That will not be left up to one department. That will be left up to multiple departments.
But to your point, if, I think he, like, so somebody comes in, they want a demolition permit, and the secretary, you know, I mean, the secretary says, hey, didn't so-and-so live in that house? Or somebody else said, wait a minute, wasn't there a picture of, you know, John F. Kennedy near that house? No, whatever, something. That's, I think, maybe you're trying to figure out who makes the determination.
Yes, yes.
Who's, who's pointing out the fact that, that, that that building is important?
No, I get that.
Yeah, sometimes you might miss it, I guess.
Yeah, sometimes you might.
If I may, um, it does say in here, determined by the commission, so I take that as the historical commission right there.
Okay.
Well, first would come in front of Ted, so Ted would.
I'm gonna flag it. If I see, if you're coming in, you've got a building that's in the eighteen hundreds, I'm gonna flag it automatic, automatic. Because my house is eighteen forty-one. Is it historic? Yes. Is it a beautiful house? Eh, you know, it's drafty. It's very windy. But is it historic? Yeah, yeah, it's historic. It was a farm. It was one of the bigger farms in town. But does it have any historical significance? Not really.
It's just an old house?
It's just an old house. That's all it is.
It would be like the mysterious.
Actually, the building commissioner of Southbridge lives there now, so now it's, now it's. I'm sorry, I had to throw it.
It would be all like the Sears house.
Yeah.
That have been, there's one up on South Street. My friend lives next, uh, lives in one, and they've altered it the outside of it. You wouldn't know.
Mr. Chenier?
Yes, Council Lazlo.
Well, I don't, I don't wanna see a lot of debate on this. The historical commission is appointed to protect the historical values of Southbridge. I would hope that they would be the ones making the decision and maybe use the inspectors department and, and as a feeder to the actual commission. The commission is supposed to make the call, and for years, that, that's the way it worked without a lot of, we didn't have a lot of particulars back in the day, but I would hope that they would make the call.
Right, and, and to, to that point, Council Lazlo, um, I'm asking these questions to establish a record as to what the intent of some of these, this language is. All right, we are, we are, we're talking about adopting a bylaw, and the intent of legislation of any kind is very important. So we, we need to have this in the record of, as to what, you know, what's some of these, if I have questions about what something means, I wanna know what, what the intent is, okay? So that we have a record of what the intent is for future interpretation. I'm, I'm not quite done yet, so I've got, I've got a couple of more. Um. Okay, so. And twelve one oh three. Number three says. Okay, it says a commission shall within fifteen business days after receipt of the application, make a written determination of whether the building is significant.
The first one, it goes in front of inspections first, twelve one oh three.
Right. Twelve dash one oh three procedure, number three.
Says the building inspector shall, within seven business days, re-forward a copy of the demo, the application, but to the commission.
Okay, so, um.
And then you determine.
So I, I think one of my questions here is really, we know all the buildings in town, I think, collectively. And, you know, if, if somebody owns a building that we would consider significant, why can't we make this determination of significance well before we ever get an application for demolition? So, um, for instance, you know, because maybe I wanna transfer my building to somebody and somebody buys it. I think that if, if, if we had a record of it here in Town Hall saying that this building is a significant building, person would go, would, would be able to, if they were doing their due diligence, would be able to figure out, oh, that's a significant building, and therefore it may have some other, other, um, other rules and regulations as to what I can do with it, okay? And so, but if that building is not determined significant until they come in and ask for a demolition permit, then I'm not sure we've given them proper notice that we're taking some of their property rights.
Well, that's like to my first point.
And that's, that's, that, that, to me, that is a concern as to potential litigation down the road if, if this ever would get, would, would ever get challenged. Um, so I, I mean, is, is it possible to make, maybe do a survey of the property in town and determine upfront what buildings we would consider significant? Yep.
Through the chair, there, it, I get it, it is possible, but I can tell you right now, not one person in this room knows everything, okay? I don't care how long you've been here. I've been here my whole life. I know Scotty my whole life. I mean, uh, half of these people, yeah, they've been here their whole life. Do they know every building in this town? No. Do they know which one's significant? No. It's, it's a combination, and that's why we're having the delay. So we can actually dig into what we need to dig into prior to losing what we are, what we possibly could have. Seven fifty-seven Main Street, when he did, when he bought that building, he wanted to tear it down. He wanted to just tear it down and put up two massive duplexes. And I, and it's like, okay, wait a minute, let's hold off here because it is a historic building. It's a beautiful building. And I don't wanna see some ugly-ass duplex, pardon my French, on the corner of that street cuz what is there actually looks good. So I told him, I, I was probably overstepping my bounds, which I do a lot, sorry. But I did tell him, I said, no, the exterior of the building has to stay exactly the way it is. And he goes, why? I said, because it's historic. And he followed the rules and he did what he had to do, and look, look at the way it looks now. You know, if nobody did their due diligence on that, not everybody knows. I don't know what every building is.
So, just, right, so it's a question. I just.
No, I'm just saying.
I think that's something they should work towards.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can designate, you know, designate buildings, we don't maybe not, maybe we don't know that, that are, maybe designate buildings that are potentially significant buildings.
Right, but that's why we, that's why we reduce this to the size that it is.
I think that's a great idea.
Historical register?
Yes, National Historical Register.
Well, there's that too, yeah, yes.
Right, well, yeah, but, but you have to apply to be on that, I believe, so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So several, several things, Ted is, Ted and I had talked about it. It's, we, there is a list. There is three, I believe there's three binders of historical homes at the library, three, and they go by street. So there are lists, there was, I have just a few here. This was given to us by Peg Dean. That's just a few in Southbridge. Um, Colav, we were talking about it. It's, it's a significant building. It's, what is it, Stucco?
Uh, yeah.
And it's a bubble top, and he's a renowned architect.
Yeah.
So we can go in and change this. We can, if, if this goes forward, we can add to it. We can say this particular significance.
This is a good.
We're talking about making, making a list, or just going, trying to.
This is a good baseline to cover what we're trying to do, which can be modified in the future if we, if we do come up with a better list. We would add it into the bylaw. Okay, we're gonna follow such and such a list of what we're doing. Again, we brought this down from, instead of covering every house in town that was fifty years old, we brought it down to a significant area.
Right.
So we did, we did bring it down to what we thought would cover most of it, and I guarantee it doesn't cover all of it.
No, and I, I will say that this is much improved over the last version of this I saw. And I, and I, and I do intend to support this. I'm just asking questions that I, that I, I want, you know, you know, I'm not trying to criticize anybody's work. I just, you know, things that seem to be vague to me, I just want to clarify.
Yep. Okay. I understand that.
And, um.
I, I like your, I like that idea of a list. I think that's something they should definitely work towards. And it'd be so easy to have that posted, like, that could be one of the things that's posted on our website, list of historical properties. And then if somebody were looking at something, they go, shoot, my property falls on that, the one I'm looking at falls on that list.
It's just an extreme amount.
You can't teach everybody everything. They're not gonna do their due diligence anyway, and they're gonna complain.
Well, that's on that.
But you can at least try, and we can try.
And that's, what I'm saying is that's just an extreme amount of work to do now when this is needed now.
No, no, right. No, no, I agree. I agree with you, and I don't think you need to tweak it. If you have a list like that, it exists.
And we just add it into it.
Or you say, you just.
Yeah.
On, um, one, and I think I have one more question here, um, that I. Item, uh, under twelve dash one oh three procedure, item number two. An applicant proposing to demolish a building subject to this bylaw, subject to this bylaw. What buildings do we say are subject to this bylaw? Do all buildings in town need to go, if you wanna demolish all buildings, any building in town?
No, again, we have a certain area.
It's, it's a certain area?
Yes.
Okay.
This defy, it, it, under the definitions, it, it specifies the areas that we are focusing on and what is actually classified. This isn't talking about every building in town.
Okay.
And, and again, any demo, uh. And, and again, any demo, uh, sorry, demolition permit comes in front of inspection, so they could determine that.
Can you just, just tell me, I'm, I'm sorry, just tell me where in, in this it's, it defines the area.
But order of operations is that they would come to you for the demolition permit, and you would say, oh, your area fall, or your potentially falls under this.
Yep, and that's when I would say to them, I would say, I would state, while you're doing and getting me your asbestos abatement, your asbestos report, your cutoffs, this, that, and the other thing, we're gonna send this to the historical commission, they're gonna do their research, it's not gonna delay them. It's just giving them the time, because either way, they still have things they have to get me in order to do what they need to do.
Okay, so I, I, right, and I'm just trying to figure out, I, I'm just, this is, this is important, because we're sitting, we're saying some building is subject to the bylaw, so, and, and I missed it when I read it apparently, but I couldn't find where we say what buildings are subject to this bylaw.
In the second page, section twelve, A, B, and C.
Yeah.
Those are the type of buildings that are significant buildings, but that's the determination that you make after the application is processed, is filed.
It would still go to inspections, it would still go to inspections first, and they would be able to determine.
If somebody comes in and says, okay, I have a ranch that was built in nineteen fifty-two, I am not gonna flag that. It's a ranch.
Right.
There's no presidents in the town of Southbridge, not that I know of anywhere.
Right, I, but again, we don't really say anywhere in here what buildings are subject to.
It does state, actually.
It says the building is listed.
The, A, B, and A, A through F, this is.
A through F are significant buildings.
Address of the building is to be demolished.
But that's the determination that's made after the application is filed. Right, so.
All of this is determined after an application is filed.
Right, so what I'm saying is, essentially, every building where there's a demol, where, where you have a demolition permit, or asking, is gonna have to go through this bylaw in some way. You can, at, you know, you can say, you know, it, you can, you know, you can go through this and say, at the inspection level, say, this is clearly not.
I agree with you one hundred percent, and that's why we did, that's why we did, in the beginning, we shortened it
Right.
to a thirty-day thing, because if they're gonna demolish the building, I need all the cutoffs, I need everything to be done, national grid slows fog. It's gonna take, it's gonna take these guys, once I hand it to them in the seven days, they're gonna look at it and say, is it significant or not? No, they're gonna sign off on it, and I'll have it back within thirty days. And it should be still right in line, we're doing all this stuff.
Like, you know, I may come in to you and say, I, I want to demolish my, my ranch on Dennison Hill Road.
Yep, and I'm gonna say, okay, this is what I need, I'll give you the list of what I need. While you give me the application, I'm gonna get it to them, they can do their research on it. And when it comes back and it's not significant, or if it is significant.
So, okay, so, so in some way, every building, every demolition permit will, every building, see, this is what I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get into.
Yeah.
Okay?
Everyone.
Okay, so, so this is what I'm just, this is what I'm getting at. It's basically the intent that when somebody comes in for demolition permit, will, will, this bylaw will be activated.
The paperwork, the paperwork will be sent.
This is not a significant building, this is a significant building.
The paperwork will be sent to the historical commission, they can make sure their determination is what it is, and when I get it back.
So, so I just, so.
And it's only fifteen days.
Yeah.
So, so the intent is that every demolition permit request or application will, will go through this procedure.
Unless it's an emergency, if the foundation's failing or if the safety issue, that will.
Wall of boulder.
Yep, that will hit the ground automatically.
All right, that's, that's all I have. Councilor Chaney?
My last comments were trying to go off of memory, and I was able to come justify a little amount of reasons. The bottom of me is the fact that developmental delays can happen, which they said they could. The review process of propensity delay periods can be timely consuming, creating uncertainty and potential slowing down new development projects. Increased cost to owners, delays can impose uncompensated costs on a property owner, and the process of navigating the regulation can add expense in terms of time, labor, and potential legal fees. Limit with property owners' economy. Bylaws can restrict the rights of property owners to immediately do as they wish with their lands, which some view as unfair government overreach. That's a major concern for me. Potential for legal challenges, we all know there can be legal challenges, the regulations can be complex, and may be subject to legal challenges if not clearly defined, or if they are perceived as overburdenous. Incentivize new builds over renovations, in some jurisdictions where their building codes are tax structures, can inadvertently make demolition and new construction more financially attractive, working against the bylaws intent, unless additional incentives are provided. And it may not prevent demolition, ultimately, in many cases, a demolition bylaw can only delay, not permanently prevent the demolition of a building, especially in a viable preservation alternative, not found in specific time things.
That's exactly what this is.
Excuse me, so there is a lot of things, I think, that we really need to look at, more importantly. I, and, and again, my main thing is making the rights away from property owners. Thank you, I'm done.
Okay, Gus?
I'm going to do, I have a couple of points. One of the points that I want to turn out, that the, as a level of clarification. It does mention that if the building is listed, you know, is, or is in within area listed in the National Historic Register, or is found eligible for the National, National Register. Do we have an updated list of the buildings that are currently eligible but not historic registered?
No.
No, we took pictures though, for weeks, we took pictures on a Saturday and put them in a folder, it's up there.
It would be up to the owner of the house or the person buying the house to be able to do that, that's up to them, because we can't enforce them to put it on the. It is technically still just a piece of paper.
Right.
So it's just.
And the other question, as far as that goes, how are we defining historical figures? How far back do they go? Because, I mean, obviously, we all, we all think about the Weller's and the Chaney's, and, you know, say, Marcy and so forth. But at some point, at some point, obviously, that moves forth.
We changed, we took out the fifty years, we took the fifty years, it's just a significant building, so, like.
But I'm thinking like a, like a historical, like, for example, I mean, our house is probably not a historic house, it's a tiny house, but, but a center, I say center, it's lit. Would that qualify as historical figure? By somebody's definition, it might, by other people who don't. You know, so that's just the consideration and thinking look. And the other thing to, to more address what George is saying, I would point out that property owners don't necessarily have unlimited rights to do as they want anyway. Because of the fact that they have responsibilities to the larger community and rely on the community for the resources that make their properties usable in bylaw at all. With roads and all this other stuff, that we all rely on, we're all part of the community, and one of the strengths of our communities is its history. So I think, I think generally, we're all in favor of protecting our house history. And I think having a bylaw like this is a step in the wrong direction, and I think it should be, I, I'm very much in favor of that, so.
All right.
Can I ask?
Any, anybody else? Ellen?
To, to Gus's point about a list of, of buildings that may be potentially eligible for being on the register. Personally, when I was clerk, some people came in to do genealogy, and they were up from the south, and I don't remember the family's name. But, so I got out a lot of records, and when I got out one of the records, it said one eighty-three Everett Street was their residence, so I got very excited, of course. Because when I, when we lived there, I always thought that house might have been owned or built by someone of prominence. Because it had a very ornate entry in the front, a spiral staircase that went upstairs, and some kind of a built-in fireplace-type thing in the hallway, and I always wondered about that. So anyway, when I opened this book and found that the person he was looking for lived at one eighty-three Everett Street, and it said the occupation of the person who was in the house was the sheriff of Worcester County. And that was way back in the eighteen hundreds. So that to me is historically a significant house, but nobody's ever gonna know it, I found it by accident.
Yep.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
I have a.
Anybody else?
Just one question, did you read the intent and purpose, the beginning of it?
No, I didn't, no idea, oh, I read the article, I don't know where exactly.
May I read the intent and purpose? All right, intent and purpose is twelve, we, we didn't, we numbered it because we were working on it, this is, we went taught how to do it. The intent and purpose, this bylaw is to enact, enact the purpose of preserving and protecting significant buildings, structures within the town of Southbridge, which constitute or reflects distinctive features of architectural, historical, and cultural history of the town, and is limit, and to limit the detrimental effects of demolition on the character of the town. Through this bylaw, owners of preferably, preferably preserved buildings are encouraged to seek out alternate options that will preserve, rehabilitate, or restore such buildings to the residents, residents of the town are alerted to impending demolition of significant buildings. By preserving, protecting significant buildings, streetscapes, and neighborhoods, this bylaw promotes public welfare to make the town a more attractable, desirable place in which to live, work. To achieve this purpose, the historical commission has authorized and advised the building inspector with respect to the insurance of a permit in demolition, what was that?
Issuance.
Sorry. I don't mean to read out loud, sorry. Demolition of significant buildings, the issuance of demolition permits, significant buildings is regulated as provided by this law. So it's, it, it does state that it goes to inspections first.
Okay, then, all right, one more comment.
All right, just, just quick, I'm, I'm having confusion on identifying the story. I'm familiar with a lot of buildings in town, meaning in construction. If you go up on Connor Oak Street and, and South Street, if you go in there, there's a fireplace in every room, all ceramic tile fireplaces, really of a different era, because they didn't have heating systems back then. There was another one I walked in that one my family members bought, and I, there was a maid's quarters, and there was a fireplace with lions, diamond eyes on it. Those are the architectural things that I'm talking about. The one on Coav, my father built that for his brother-in-law, okay, and it was a California-style home. You know, not energy efficient or anything like that, but that never struck me as architecturally historic. Maybe the architect that built it was historic, but the building itself, I look at like the Credit Union as historic. You know, or the mansions of Southbridge back in the day. So it's in the eye of the beholder, and what I'm saying is, I have to trust the, the historical commission. We put them in there like we put the conservation commission, that's all the conservation gotta worry about, wetlands, you know, protecting the environment. Historic should be just historic buildings. So going forward, I'm open-minded on this, but I think the historic commission needs to make a determination, and hopefully, you know, going forward, we'll, we'll work on it. I'm, I'm, I gotta read the bylaws and walk, I'm not a big guy for more government, but conservation of Southbridge is important.
All right, so I think we've had all the comments that we should have at this point, I would call for a vote.
Just one more statement. When four ninety-five Main Street went down, we pretty much had a cry altogether. And it still hurts my heart every time I go by there, when I think of how gorgeous it was, it was in great shape. Moses Marci built that building for his granddaughter who was getting married to a prominent attorney in Worcester County, and people came from all over to look at that house, and that house went down in a day or two. And that house should never have gone down, that should never happen again.
Okay, just, just so we remember what we're, we're voting on now. Review and discuss a demolition delay by law approved by the historical commission, entertain a motion to recommend the town council for acceptance. The motion has been, has been moved, the issue has been moved, and it has been seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous, all present. Okay, agenda item number four.
So you passed it? You have people here to pass it?
Agenda.
I mean, to go.
Agenda item number four adjourned.
I was thinking of the one to say. Did you never put in there, like, is there anything that we need to discuss?
Okay, all those in favor? Or adjourned?